I'm calling the November planning board meeting to order. Warren, you receiving us? We are not hearing you yet. Oh, he's muted.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Cool, very low. We're gonna, let's see if we can pull it. We'll try to fix it on our end, but it's very low at the moment.
I heard that.
That's how everyone makes the stress.
Warren, so I'm saying something now, let's see if it's better.
Okay, can you hear me now? That better?
Yes, we're good.
Okay, great.
And uh. Do we have Scott's map or what do we have from you? Do we have a map? The first item. Valentine Chase. Ground solar application, public hearing. So can I have a um motion to open the uh wait, did we say thirty five? What did we say?
We said thirty five.
Well, let's just uh, did everyone get to look at the October minutes?
Yes.
Uh, does anyone have any changes?
None.
All right, can I have a motion to accept the October minutes?
Motion. Second.
Full in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Right, accepted the minutes? Now, can I, can I have a motion to open the public hearing for uh the Valentine Chase uh solar, round mounted solar?
Second.
More in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, public hearing is open. Scott, any updates or tell us about the, tell us about the project?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm Scott Chase, I live at five sixty Carpenter Hill Road. Um, we have recently purchased. To plug in hybrid cars and converted the house to mini split, so I need more juice. So I am proposing um to add a ground mount uh solar array. Um, I am in the Bethel Hamlet district and I'm also one of the people that served on the committee. To write our uh ground mount solar regulations. And we said in a Hamlet district where often there are many very small lots. Fact in Bethel, there are lots that are smaller than a quarter acre. That um. Putting in a ground mount could have an impact on the neighbors and so we felt there should be a site plan approval process and hence I'm here. However, I happen to have a very large lot in the Hamlet district uh over two and a half acres. Um, I believe that the side yard minimums are um. Like twenty feet, I um am able to place it in the center of my lot so that the. Closest I am to any neighbors is approximately a hundred and thirty feet. I uh when the leaves are on the trees, I don't believe anybody can see it except for. Maybe me and my wife made me put it in such a fashion that the woodshed actually blocks the view of it, but in any case. Um, it meets all of the requirements, it is, it will be fourteen panels approximately eleven feet by twenty six feet. At its tallest, it might be eight or nine feet. Um, and as I say, it does meet all of the requirements um. For the, I am in a little bit of a time crunch. In that uh the solar tax credits go away. If this is not constructed up and running by January and accepted by Central Hudson by January first. And so my hope is that tonight. Um. Taking into account any of the concerns that are expressed this evening. That the board would be able to come up with a resolution of approval. And uh the only thing I might add is because I have not had a detailed survey done. Uh which we talked about at the last meeting, maybe for the. Uh locations, the proviso should say plus or minus. I don't know, five feet, and it wouldn't make any difference to the regulations. And so uh I think that that's, I'm happy to answer any other questions um. As I say, I'm just going through the process that I helped create.
Does any members have any questions for the applicant?
Nope, nope.
Uh, are there any members of the public here who wish to speak on this application? Warren. Okay, so uh Warren, uh so. Uh, do you have any questions for the applicant or uh or and also would you like to explain to us what, where does this fall with seeker, like what type action is?
It's not a type two action under seeker. So it would be an enlisted action under seeker. So we can just uh, do we have a short form environmental assessment form? We could go through that.
Yeah. Yeah, Trish has it. Um. George, do you have any question? Okay, so. The board doesn't have any questions, the public, no, no, no one wants to speak on this application? So uh.
We're close.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Um, we're going to go over this part two of seeker. As I read out the questions, uh uh members, please uh speak up if you don't agree with how I'm gonna answer them. Uh remember, it is no or small impacts. Uh is uh the standard, then moderate to large impact is the other box if we think there is one. Okay, so will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No or small impact. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No or small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environment? No or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect? Existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkways or small impacts. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate? Reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Uh, no or opposite. Um, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? No or small impact. Uh, public, private wastewater facilities? No or small impact. Will the proposed action impair? The character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna? No or small impact. Will the proposed action? Uh, result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No or small impact. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No or small impact. Uh, so for every question in part two that was answered moderate to large impact, which there were none. Um, uh there needs to explain why, et cetera, et cetera. So we're gonna go down. So there was none, so we're gonna go down here to this box. And I'm gonna check the box that says, check this box if you determine based on the information analysis above. Any supporting documentation that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Saying I have a problem me checking that box?
No.
Okay, uh name of lead agency. It's eleven twelve, right?
Twenty five.
So Warren, I mean, uh we're gonna do our usual, we'll vote on this and then you'll prepare a official re- resolution that we can. Further adopt next month, does that sound fine with you?
Yeah, why don't you, since Scott is under a time crunch. Uh, why don't we just do an oral um. Um, approval and I will follow it up with a written a- approval. Um, after the meeting. Um, before the next meeting and. Uh, just, you know, whereas um usual application indication from Scott. Um, and um, you know, uh scheduled the public hearing, open, closed. And um conducted a secret review and issued an egg deck. And so the board. Uh hereby uh planning board grants, was it site plan and special permit approval?
Your site plan.
Uh, grant site plan approval to. Uh, the applicant um in accordance with the site plan that was submitted to the town board. And um. Uh, the usual language about paying all fees and. Uh, before it's signed, et cetera, et cetera. So. If you want to adopt that, then I'll formalize that with something in writing for you.
Can I have a motion to accept the resolution uh as as described by Warren?
I motion.
So. Uh, Scott. And second. Uh, and we'll do a uh.
One roll. One question, can I add that proviso a plus or minus five feet to the?
Didn't it, what did the?
It said plus or minus.
It said plus or minus on the site plan, okay, proven, so I I deem, you know, that's good. Uh. Uh, okay, so uh Al?
Aye.
Now, I gotta write, uh Ari?
Hi.
It's a P R I, right?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
And I also vote aye. Uh, let it be known that the resolution passed uh six to zero on November twelfth. Thank you, Zalaka. You're not done, thank you, Scott. Um, next up. We have Carson Power. Um. Who are asking for an extension of the deadline for their special use permanent site plan at four fifty four Bean River Road. Uh, I take it we have. Svetlana from Carson Power?
Good evening, yes. My name is Selena and I'm actually on behalf of the Nexamp, Nexamp purchased one hundred percent of the membership interest of the. Pulver's Corner Solar LLCs, so we're the long terms owners and operators who are constructing the project currently.
Right, sorry. Sorry, just, okay. So what are you asking for?
We are seeking a six month extension to our special use permit and site plan approval, which is currently up. To expire at the end of this month on the twenty eighth of November. Uh, we're currently underway on construction, uh we're currently trenching, we will be installing our modules, you know, next month. And will be completed within the six months um that this approval will permit.
Um, and. Have, and the reason for uh the extent not being done within the time of the last extension?
We, we had a little bit of a delayed start, so we completed the purchase from Carson Power. Uh, and then we did have a construction hold um while we coordinated with our investors. Um, but we, we got our approval this spring and we've been moving forward with scheduling all the procurement, all of our. Contractors and uh this is typical, you know, about a year of construction, a year and a half. Um, so we're going. You know, forward with the plan and we had always um, you know, been planning to seek this extension, so we we seek. Um, the board's approval for for an additional six months and to be completed before the eighteen months. Deadline that that was originally permitted.
And you guys haven't encountered any problems with the actual site or anything like that sort of thing?
We, we have not, no, there's no material changes being presented at this time.
Warren, would you like to inform the board on uh, you know, with, you know, how do we go about this?
Yeah, I pre- I prepared a resolution approving the uh. This is a second request for an extension, it's permitted under our zoning code. Uh, and I have reviewed an email uh from uh Svetlana, is that how you pronounce your name?
Very well done, yes.
Uh, which uh uh set forth. Uh, the progress that they had made and it looks like they've made substantial progress and continue to be in. Full compliance with the permit conditions, so um I have no objection to the granting of a second request. Permitted by our zoning code and I prepared a resolution to that effect. I think I have the date right, what did I put in there? Would that be May thirty first, twenty twenty six or? Would that be six months from now?
That's what I was counting.
Yeah. So I plugged in May thirty first, twenty twenty six, but if that's not correct, then just change the date to six months from now.
Is it six months from now or six months from when the other one expired?
Um, I, I, let's do it six months from from tonight, is that okay? Uh, or do you want it to run from the end of November?
Yeah, we do it from the end of.
Of course.
Then the thirty first makes sense, right? Because if it's, if it's running from the end, it expires on. When does it expire, actually? The thirtieth.
Yeah, so if you want to change that to uh change what I sent you. Um. That'll give them a little bit more time. So it'll be from uh. November thirtieth to six months from that date, just plug that in.
Here, six months from the date of expiration of, oh, it says. Yeah, it's, it's fine, you actually have that language in this, okay.
Oh, okay.
Um. All right, board members, anyone have any questions?
Not sure if any issues up there?
No, they had some erosion with that rain quite a while ago and they fixed it immediately.
They're putting quite a piece of uh landscape in particular.
Yeah. Non infant first class there.
Okay, uh, so uh with that, I guess I'll read the resolution. Town of Pine Plains Planning Board Resolution approving second application of Pulver's Corner Solar One LLC and Pulver's Corners. Sorry, Pulver's Corner uh Solar Two LLC for extension of the special use permit and site plan approvals. Whereas Pulver's Corners Solar One LLC and Pulver's Corner Solar Two LLC herein, herein after referred to as Pulver's Corner. Uh. Apply for and receive the special use permit and site plan approval for its proposed solar project on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. And whereas the subsequent. Whereas subsequent to the issuance of said approval lawsuit titled Preserve Pine Plains at All. V Town of Pine Plains Planning Board at All, index number five zero 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 eight seven slash. Twenty twenty four. Were filed challenging the issuance of the special permit and site plan approval. And the seeker determination of the planning board in conjunction with those applications. And whereas the Article seventy eight petition after having been transferred to. Putnam County due to conflict of interest of several judges in Dutch County was resolved in favor of Pulver's Corner. And the planning board by decision issued in June of twenty twenty four. And whereas the petitioners have filed the notice of appeal but have withdrawn that appeal and whereas Pulver's Corner. By letter dated. Uh, August fifth, twenty twenty four, made application to the Town of Pine Plains Planning Board for a six month extension of the special use permit. And site plan approval pursuant to the provisions contained in section two seventy five dash fifty five M and two seventy five dash sixty two N. Of the zoning code which apply, application was granted and whereas the planning board notes. That the provisions of the town code allow. For two extensions not to exceed six months and whereas the planning board notes that Pulver's Corner. Has satisfied most of the conditions of the site plan and special use permit approval and has made progress in the remaining conditions. But has not to date completed that process. Um. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the second application of Pulver's Corner to the extent of. Extending the approvals for the site plant and special use permit for a period of six months from the date of. Expiration of the original approval. May thirtieth, twenty twenty five to May thirty first, twenty twenty six. Can I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So bad.
Second.
Okay. Uh, voice vote, Al?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Oh, this is an old one. I'm sorry. All right?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I also aye. Uh, it would be shown that the resolution passed by. Uh, a vote of six to zero. On November. Oh. May twentieth one. All right, you have your extension.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, take care. Um. All right. Let's bring along nicely here. Um. I'm actually gonna just adjust this uh. Cause we need the chair of the Z B A for this next and and since he was here, he was kind enough to hang around. Uh, so we're gonna go to the Hudson Company first, you guys are ready, right? Everyone, you need is here. Karen's gonna come in.
Okay.
Um, so. All right. Jamie, you want to uh, let's pull up these, whoever's presenting, uh wanna update us on the revised plan? And what happened with the D E C?
Um, I'll start.
Sure. Everybody, Jamie and Havel, we're mixing company, good to see everybody again. Uh, we had a big slowdown with the D E C, we kind of lost about six months of, maybe five months of um productivity while they were reviewing. We then brought them out for, they came out with a ruling, we brought them out to walk the site. And um. They, I believe the technical language is it's not going to be under their jurisdiction. Um. And so we're free to proceed. With you. This is the simple version of it, I think that's pretty much it, I think everybody here knows that. Um, during that process, we did go through a redesign um. To my surprise, saving the existing building and scabbing on the new building is more expensive than. Um, leveling it and starting over. So our proposal is to make. A singular building as opposed to two buildings conjoined into one building.
That's, that's the newest slide.
If you scroll the next PDF, that'll be the site plan.
There we go.
And I'm gonna turn it over to Kyle Bargwell from La Bella.
Thanks, Jamie, I appreciate it. Uh, it's a pleasure to be back in front of the board again tonight, it's been um, it was in the summer we were last in front of you. Um, as Jamie stated, since then, we've done some redesign to the site. And incorporated this one standalone building in lieu of um keeping the remaining warehouse. Um, it's important to note that this was mostly just a geometric change and there's really not a big increase in building footprint at all, it's only a few thousand square feet. Um, with that being said. The lot coverage only increased by one percent, was a really small minor increase in the purpose associated with this redesign. Um, you'll see that um. The drive aisles are more or less exactly where they were with the previous plan. All of the buffers and stormwater practices are maintained where they were when we presented in the summer, our septic systems have not changed at all. Um, that mere increase in one percent of lot coverage really had no effect on stormwater, we were able to assess that with our. Um, previously designed stormwater basins, our infiltration basins and our bio retention area. Um, also with this redesign, we also incorporated some things that, you know, we've heard from the planning board, the public. Um, over the previous months, um, so there obviously was concern about um noise. And we've gone back and forth and we've updated our noise report to um address some of the concerns from the board and the consultant engineers. Um, with that being said, our current plan now shows the sawmill as a closed structure. There are a couple garage doors on it, but previously it was an open structure that obviously sound would be um be able to transport farther away, so. Previously, we were pretty confident that uh um based on the D C regulations that we wouldn't have any issues with noise. And now we've even increased uh that with closing up the structure. Um, another big item was obviously the jurisdictional determination from the D C. Uh, we went through all of the different avenues and we talked D C, they were out of sight and they have determined that they will not be taking jurisdictional determination of the site. Um, with these really minor changes, um, tonight we were hoping to. Kind of close a chapter and receive a, a secret negative deck and um we're happy to hear any questions from the board and.
Continue, so what is now a closed structure, the thing on the right?
Correct, yes, the, the sawmill was previously um kind of like a open, open structure.
It was a shed.
Right, exactly.
And now how closed is it, like?
Um, it's gonna be closed on all four sides, we do call out on the plan there, you'll see where we have garage doors, which are, you know, large to allow for. Um. Torque lifts and exactly. But it's gonna be a major improvement on what we already felt, we're confident that there would be no adverse impact with noise.
So it's like another building?
No, they're like sliding, the, the main door could slide it open.
Yeah, you would, you know, the closing so that there'd be further, you know, prevention from the noise.
But it's not insulated or?
Right, no plumbing.
And what about the, and remind me of the part at the top. Uh, in the north there, that's, that's also like a shed like structure?
Exactly, on the north side of that building, we. Jamie calls it the beam arcade, it's where they would be um, you know, putting down their large views for their transports.
And that's just really to protect them from the elements.
So that's gonna be, again, so what is that, that's gonna be?
That's just a roof.
Roof and then oh.
And then open and just, it's to store raw material.
And that, and that was um just like was on the previous plan.
The saw shed is currently open, as you know, it's open on three sides in on one ninety nine. Uh, the doors were really driven by honestly the guy's wind protection. Uh, and had the added benefit of also containing some noise.
So it's not conditioned?
It's not. As in heat and air, no.
And the sawdust is collected how?
Um, those are the portable band saws and the sawdust, it doesn't produce much sawdust because it's just slicing boards. Um. One of the saws has a dust bag on it. Um, one of the saws, it really just kind of falls to the ground and we sweep it up every day. Um, and it fills, you know, garbage can every couple weeks.
The other one is for cleaning and that has more.
Inside the mill produces more sawdust, which is collected through the central dust collection system.
Right.
And and transported into the outside baghouse and then funneled into the, the um. Tractor trailers, which are parked there. The secret. There and then they're hauled off and that dust gets turned into briquettes for uh wood burning stoves. And animal bedding.
And the round structures, the water tank for fire suppression?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
And the thing next to it is a kiln?
That's correct. So those are also consistent with the, the previous plan from the.
And is this a garden area below the showroom? What is this, the square?
That's the septic area, the primary, and that's consistent with. Um, so.
But we hope that's gonna be green and lush, plantings and the sculpture.
How much music?
It'd be up for green.
George, do you have any comments or questions?
No, now I've reviewed everything. Looks good.
And does this enclosing of the. Shed causing, it doesn't cause any issues with like, doesn't really change what it is?
No.
Uh. Oh, well, this is obviously a continuation of the public hearing. I don't know. Do we, do we have to make a motion on that, Warren? That I forgot to do could, or is it because it's continuing, we could just keep continuing?
By just continuing when you're finished with the public hearing, just close it.
Okay, so is anyone here from the public wanting to speak on this application? Okay.
Alright, board members, keep asking, anyone have any questions?
I was just impressed by how thorough this subplan is and I like, I like the little change of angle of the uh. This. And I think that just kind of feels right to have done this somewhere.
I would like to take total credit for difference.
Can we, yeah, let's see that, the, do we have the elevation? Uh, or the rendering or whatever of the uh, what it's gonna look like from the road?
Yeah.
It's definitely somewhere in the plans.
Was it?
Hmm.
In like this set or?
No, it's not. If you, if you don't mind, I'll go.
Oh, yeah, no. No, we did it.
No.
You have it?
No.
You can put them in here.
Sorry, it's like uh maybe the last.
That's the new building, right?
Correct, yes, yeah.
It's not in that tour.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was, wasn't it like?
Yeah, September, October, I think they're rendering.
Um, we're sensitive. The meeting that didn't come to. August, uh, was that September? So I, I think I sent it like in a few days before.
Yep, yes.
And as the public note, this is a public information folder and anyone can go. And uh go to our site. Uh, and look at all the information that's for any application, actually.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
While, while you're looking for that, let's uh maybe uh. George, can you just explain the V E C thing just so we can hear from someone besides the applicant about what what the D E C determined and how that and how that affects things?
Um, so by not taking jurisdiction, then there's, it just remains a federal wetland, so there's no hundred foot adjacent area to worry about. So that makes it much, much easier to develop.
Which allowed them to do the plan as they had.
Plan as they had.
So they, the state stepped in and said they wanted to take jurisdiction and then changed their mind?
They came, they took a site visit and once they looked at what's there.
So they wanted the opportunity.
I don't know if they were thinking that, you know, uh, the applicant asked them to do a site visit and then. You know, once they did, they like, oh yeah, this is not what we thought it was. How are we doing now?
Kyle's gonna send it.
Well, yes, so Scott, while we're waiting for the, uh, what, you have any comments on this and the the process as far as each. Variances they'd be looking for or vary, is it one variance or?
No, it was several and I would have to have the applicant, uh. Uh, just those off, I don't have them right for me, but.
Yes.
So that the um, but I think that uh.
Thank you.
Sure.
Like other involved agencies, you guys are the lead agency, no other agency can take action. Until the environmental review is finished with either a positive or a negative, so. The next step will be, once there is a declaration, then and perhaps a negative declaration. That then frees the other agencies to proceed. Um, it would come if, for instance, you made a negative declaration tonight. It would then come to the zoning board of appeals, we would be able to then act on the various requests. And then once you knew what the zoning board of appeals had allowed. You would then be able to complete your site plan review.
Okay, and when is your next meeting?
Uh, fourth Tuesday.
That, that's right before Thanksgiving, twenty.
Twenty fifth.
Yeah, fifth. Um, and what are the variances, Karen?
Uh, number of structures, um, bridge floor area, next to it's a lot, all the principal structure. Start number of principal structures. Um.
You're doing good. I was gonna like you say what you're thinking. Yeah. It's set facts and um park.
Yeah, a hundred foot set after warehouse and the number, a number of required harnesses.
All right, do we have? No, okay, uh, well.
Call you on the wifi?
No, I'm not.
Yeah, so wifi. It's on the voltage board right in the middle there is a.
It's down like that, but they're not in the folder?
I don't, I'm confused because I had one. August mission.
No. My only question is there's, we really haven't addressed the walkability issue that it's brought up. So where does that leave us?
Oh, as far as the. Scott, do you anticipate that you guys are gonna attach that condition? Or no?
Um, I don't see how that issue comes to the Z B A. It's not a requirement. That we have the ability to waive or not waive.
Okay.
It really becomes a site plan review issue.
My thoughts on it, I mean, I agree with what Warren said, like having a pathway through. The applicants operating sawmill property is somewhat problematic with. Liability and everything else. Uh, I mean, I really would like to see the sidewalk. Put in. But I mean, I know it's like the state and money and all the things, but I mean, that, that in my mind is the cleanest. Just continue the, the uh Stewart sidewalk to the corner. And then. I guess you hope someday that the county does something on eighty three. Some sort of. Trail in the uh shoulder or something.
Such a difficult place to put a sidewalk.
I gotta go over that thing.
I can't see that. There is another way in. By going up to the, the road and across that. Basically a bridge over to their property. It has, you know, Dale's permission to have people walk on that.
Wait, wait, what? Well, the bridge is on their property, isn't it?
Yeah, but I mean, the walking through and up over. East of Stewart's. The south of Stewart's on the little driveway, whenever they come through. And then, you know.
Well, this is gonna be the. Then, then Jamie.
Get to this point here.
Oh, I see. Oh, yeah. It's place where is? Jamie, are you gonna own up to the driveway in in Stewart's when, when this goes through?
Yeah, where the sheds are.
Yeah, so up to the, so he'll own that.
And then back to basically where the gravel area is now.
Okay. Which one is?
But then like they can't, so if they come over the bridge, then what? And then they gotta come around like where there's like a kiln and all this other stuff and trucks going.
No, I'm thinking this is for staff if they live in town, they wanna walk to work. I mean. It's not for tourists and private investigation. Can say.
Well, that's, that's what the original thing brought up was. Yeah, for staff, I, yeah, it's their property. They can walk across the grass and, you know, Jamie can let. His employees do whatever he wants to let them do. But it's, you know, we can't, you know, for the, a public trail system or walk. I think the town's just gonna have to work. For my town board members, try some grant or something to get sidewalk uh done to, to there or somehow. But Dick has a good point, like we even relied on some of those trees that are there to screen Stewart's. So, you know, we start chopping down trees and it's gonna change the character of that approach. Hey, I, I, I talked long enough. Uh, so this is uh the look from like generally from uh the corner there.
Exactly.
Uh, and obviously, I mean, in my opinion, I. Lot better than what's there. I mean, I, you know, this is our, gonna be our gateway property coming into the community, so that's something we need to think about, like, you know, how's. Do we like that or not? I'm not gonna, I like it, but I'm not gonna. Tell you guys what they think. Uh. So, um. I just wanted to get that up so that we, we, we visualize what this is gonna look like. There's one big building and then the. Uh, showroom in the front there. Uh. Okay, so. Any questions? With that is the poll, at one last time, anyone from the public wants to speak on this application? Um, so then I'm going to move to uh ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move second?
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Uh, Warren? So, uh, now we, uh, we, we're gonna move to go through our seeker worksheet. We'd be doing the long form or what are we doing here?
Yeah, I'd say, um. We have a long form, uh, part one, so we have to do a long form part two.
Uh, so we got these eighteen questions? Yeah, eighteen questions. Um, and so.
Shoot me.
Hmm. If answered yes. So, so George, you wanna just instruct us how to go through this? We answer yes, I mean, we answer no, we can skip the whole section or we still have to go to the individual? We don't have to do the individual question. Okay, so we're gonna go have a general question of a section. And then if we answer yes, then we have to look at the uh, the individual sections under that section. Uh, the subsection. Uh, and what is the standard? A proposed action may involve construction on. So yes is what? Let's see, if you answer yes, your number four. Uh, somebody short, short circuit my, what, what's the standard, George, for? For the yes or no on the top of the section? Is it moderate to large impacts?
No, no. If it, no, that, that, the impact, yeah, just. That, so in other words, for number one, right? Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site, yes.
So, yeah, okay, so, alright, and then we get to. And then some questions, no, we're small impact may occur.
Yes.
And then, and then a moderate or large impact may occur. But as we learned when we did cohorsen power, that does not mean just because there's a moderate to large impact. Uh, it does not mean it. Uh, we. Yes. Alright, so impact on land, proposed action may involve construction on or physical altercation, alteration of the land surface of the proposed site, yes. Alright, so part one subsection, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet.
No, no.
No, no, right? Or. That's. No, we're small.
The answer in part one, that would be a yes. Kate comes up, right?
What's that?
I said, I believe. For the answer that was provided in part one, that's a yes, right?
What is it?
I don't have part one in front of me. I mean. We've designed so that everything's above the water table and the water's gonna lose impacts, anything?
What is it, a large impact?
Like they would be no or small.
Yeah, that's a no or small impact. The proposed action may involve construction on slopes of fifteen percent or greater, no. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within feet, five feet of the surface, no. The proposed app, act, uh, uh, obviously anyone speak up of the board, if I, if you disagree with how it's. The rose action may involve the excavation and removal of more than a thousand tons of natural material. But that's not right. Uh, the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases.
No, it's not the one. No, I, I mean, I think the plan would be to construct a facility in less than a year.
Uh, the proposed action may result in an increased erosion whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment by herbicides.
Yeah, so no or small, okay.
The proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area, no. Other impacts. Um. Does anyone have any other impacts they think should belong in that section?
I simply. Certainly.
Uh, sorry, impact, section two, impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of. Or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. Cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves, I, I would say no, does anyone agree? This asphalt piles. Um, impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, streams, river, so that's yes. The proposed action may create a new water body, no. The rose action may result in an increase or decrease of, of over ten percent or more than a ten acre increase. Wait a minute, or more than a ten acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water, no. The proposed action may involve dredging, no. Uh, the proposed action may involve destruction within a, or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in beds. Or banks of any other water body.
That's yes. No, we're, we're not saying any action inside the wetland or the base.
It's a chance of joining.
So, no, it's just small.
Right, because they're just in the. The proposed, the proposed action may create turbidity in water, in a water bottle, in a water body. Either from upland erosion runoff or disturb bottom sediments. I, no, no, so. The proposed action may include construction of one or more intake or withdrawal. Intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water.
No.
The proposed action may include. Uh, construction of one or, or more outfalls of for discharge of wastewater to surface water, no. The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to. Siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies, no. The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site. Of the proposed action.
That's a small.
Small. Impacts. But no, we're small impact. Uh, the proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides and any, uh, I, I assume you're not using.
Not in a major.
Uh, the proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. Uh, small, small. Okay, any other? Things that belong in that section? Impact on groundwater, the proposed action may result in a new or additional use of groundwater or may have potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer.
Your sign was pretty spot on to prevent any contamination of groundwater or the.
Sure. Are you gonna be using groundwater?
Um, no, no.
Does everyone agree with that? Alright, next, impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. Everyone agree? Moving on to the next, impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state regulated air emissions source. That's no. Uh, impacts on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna.
Uh, no.
The proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered, oh wait, oh, what did I do? No, messing up. No, that's that's a subsection. Impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. Oh. Impact on aesthetic resources, land use of the proposed action. Are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. No.
Based on that picture, that certainly helps, huh?
The the impact on historic or archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. The impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in the loss of recreation opportunities or reduction of open space resource as designated. In any adopted municipal open space plan. No. Uh, impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. No. Transportation, the proposed in action may result in a change or exist to existing transportation systems. No. Impact on energy, the proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. I guess. The proposed action will require a new or an upgrade to an existing substation.
Oh, no.
The rose action will require the creation or ex- extension of an energy transmission supply to serve more than fifty signal. Uh, the pros action may utilize more than twenty-five hundred megawatt hours per year of electricity.
I would, I'll take it up. Megawatts of energy a year or that.
The proposed action may involve heating or cooling more than a hundred thousand square feet of building area.
No.
Uh, is there any other impacts? In this section. Are you guys doing any, you know, solar on the roofs or anything like that? Impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. Uh, yes. The proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. No. The proposed action may result in blasting. It was just blasting on the side. A couple weeks ago, uh, may result in blasting within fifteen hundred feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home. Uh, no. The proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day. Uh, no, that's. The rose action may result in light shining into adjur- joining properties. He, no, we're small.
I'm small. Again, there was a lighting plan.
The proposed action may result in lighting, creating sky glow brighter than existing conditions. No, we're gonna make sure. Eight or twenty-eight or less, what have you guys? Between our.
Well, we've had a tough vote for that.
Impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of intent. So, no. Almost there, guys. Look, consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use policy. The proposed action is not consistent. It is consistent, right? Do we agree? So I'm gonna answer no to this question.
Double made.
Consistency with community character. The proposed project is is inconsistent with existing community character, so. It is.
It is consistent.
It is consistent, so it's no.
The last two redundants.
Alright, so now what? Is there?
There's a part three.
Where's the part three?
Wait a second, uh, we did, you did community character? Okay, just a minute.
You said we were almost done.
What what do we do?
I didn't fill that out. I was just reading along, but it's just the back two pages. It's open to the page you want.
This one?
Yeah. But I'm saying is when you're done, instead of refilling everything out, you just take those. Keep it easy.
I'll just take them all. Yep. Whole environmental assessment form, part three, evaluation of the magnitude and importance of project impact and determination of significance. The part three provides reasons in support of determination of significance. The lead agency must complete part three for every question in part two. Where the impact has been identified as potentially moderate to large or where there is need to explain why a particular element of the proposed action will not or may. Result in a significant will will not or may result in a significant adverse environmental impact. Based on the analysis in part three, the lead agency must decide whether to require environmental impact statement to further assess the proposed action. Or whether av- available information is sufficient for the lead agency, uh, the lead agency to conclude. That the proposed action will not have a significant adverse environmental impact. By completing the certi- certification on this next page. The lead agency can complete its determination of significance. Reasons supporting this determination. To complete this section, identify the impact based on. Part two responses and describe it in magnitude. We found none. Uh, assess the importance of the impact. Uh, do I have to keep reading all this time? We didn't.
No, no, you can go right to uh. Since you didn't identify any major impacts, the large impacts. I think you can go right to the uh a neg deck. Indicating on page two of two. A that this project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment and therefore. An environmental impact statement need not be prepared. Accordingly, this negative declaration is issued.
Okay, one 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 moment. Hold on, I gotta, I gotta see what's going on. I'm sorry, everyone. Give me one second.
I can throw with it, right? Did I do this?
Not at all, please, that's.
Kate's not here, so somebody. Um, on A, it says this project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment. And therefore, environmental impact statement need not be prepared. Accordingly, this negative declaration is issued. Check that. And I think that's all we have to do.
Yeah.
You still, so.
That is all you have to do. You just have to fill out the bottom section there with that information.
I'll go to boss, but uh so we could actually get a motion to. So, um, have a negative declaration on this and approve.
That's correct.
If this review is complete.
Martha.
Second.
Larry.
Yes. Scott.
Please.
Alan?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yeah.
We'll find out. Uh, motion passes for. Oh, this probably was here.
Sorry about that.
Hey. That's the, that's the vote so far.
Oh, wait, can I go? Where are we at? It's a good, keep going. Where are we at here?
You're gonna fill this out. By the vote of five to one so far, you could be the sixth.
I vote aye also. Alright, so what, uh? And we check this, the project will have no significant adverse impact. Yes, I agree. Uh. Alright, Warren, we took a vote, it passed six to zero.
Okay, you're done. For uh at the, for this stage, this can now go to the Z B A. And then once the Z B A makes its determination, it'll come back to you for. Uh, final uh resolution approving or denying the project.
Scott, can I get on the agenda for your?
Yes. And you have, you wrote in? Yeah, alright, um. Really? You think? Uh, anyways. Um. Alright, so. We know what, uh, you you know what you have to do and Scott. Have fun. And uh, we'll see you next month.
Hmm, good luck. Appreciate you working with me.
So next up on the agenda. Is a continuation. Of the. Upstate Pines Public Hearing. Um, so. Can we pull that up, please? And also include. Prepare to pull up the red letter. Um, Georgia's notes and then the red letter. Uh, answer, I guess, let's say Dave said Georgia's previous memo.
Okay.
Uh. Sorry, we'll just get set up here, guys. What's up?
Oh, I can't vote the letter, we're done with this.
Okay, did you have it ready? Alright, uh. If you guys wanna. Guys wanna tell us where we're at, what changes?
Have anything you to present, you could pass the use issue last time. The only changes that you made to the plan. Um, was the addition of the planters. And we responded to the technical review that we previously received. And then received a second technical review today.
Oh, for, you mean George, I'm the memo, okay. Um, and the planters. They had a question about, um, like, so the the state won't come and see those planters. I mean, like, oh, they they gave up that that entrance or will they?
No, I mean, again, I can't speak for the D O T, but it's not a permanent, you didn't come in there and put a fence and block yourself off. I mean, we're putting it now.
Cuz it has to be.
It should temporary movable object, right? So you. You're not surrendering your rights, I wouldn't think.
Then how can they put a split rail fence on the other side?
Split rail fence is a much more permanent. Right, you're, if you put a fence off, you're blocking your, right, blocking something.
Right, but that's what's posed.
Physically, it's a block, but it's it's different, like legally speaking. If I was gonna try and argue that you surrendered your space and you put a fence. I'm gonna have good standing with that argument. If you put a planter box and you can move. Or not move, that's that's like an aesthetic thing.
Right.
Visual cue, it's not a physical block. Under the law.
What is your, what is your concern about the fact?
I have the same, I have the same concern that I brought up. The second we give, that they're putting a split rail fence on South Main Street on the south entrance. And then planters on the north entrance. Let's say north of the what is proposed to be Upstate Pines and then, but there's a split rail fence to be added to the property frontage.
Is that really ever gonna be an influence in the ring? They don't.
It's, is.
They don't want that interest, so they are surrendering that interest and they're blocking it off. I mean, they're they're not arguing that point.
Right, that's my understanding.
And it's, is gr- is grass there now, right? Like a part of it? Or something like grass and gravel sort of.
Probably half of it, yeah.
Anyone else have questions about that or anything else?
Like, the letter you sent today, there's some, I don't have a copy of it. There's some, um, points, things that need to be filled out.
See, yeah, that's, I was hoping we'd get that out.
That's on the A F, yeah. And then, I think that was. I thought, you know, it looked, it looked like it filled out all those.
Not on the one I had.
Okay.
But I was hoping maybe there was another one. Honestly, which, you know, the data, the one you reviewed?
I do not.
Cuz this one was the one that I downloaded for this latest.
This one that I had, had everything all checked.
Awesome. That's good.
So that takes care of like.
Well, that was the, that was the bigger issues, really.
I mean, I think, I think you just said earlier.
That was also my understanding is that, is that all of your questions, we'd already filled out all this section, but might, there might have been an issue with. Something, whatever document you received, that it was, yes, we completed the whole way up.
Cool.
So the stuff is just.
I have that. But mostly D and E. But all of D doc two was blank on the last. Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it's awful. And so the construction details that are on page one that I'm looking for, I mean, those are just standard. You know, if you were to. So there's always a detail sheet, right, on, in a, in a final document, that would say. Here's the light full days, here's the thickness of gravel, and thickness of concrete, thickness of asphalt, or the type of asphalt you're gonna use. Stuff like that, so you know, when code enforcement goes out to see if it was done right or not. He sees what they did and. Sign off, no misunderstandings.
And. Yeah, so what, as far as the the current. Septic that's there. Are you, are you gonna be working on that at all now in this stage?
No, no progress works in the subject.
No, that would be in the future stages if if the other aspects of the project, phase two was to happen, and then the cannabis shot would be. Connected to that larger septic that would come out.
And like the sidewalk, you were asking about the sidewalks and stuff, is that for this or is that for the future?
It looked like there was a sidewalk proposed, it kind of went around the weigh station, I didn't recall seeing before.
No, it's not, we're preferring ADA access, like to bridge over the scale and not disturb it, and we're proposing uh gravel parking lots, we provided uh descriptions of what that looks like, we've reviewed that with um the the highway department in terms of how it connects with railroad avenue.
And and where in the ADA access goes to what, does there's a side door, or then the person supposed to come around the fronts?
No, there's a, there's a door that exists on the south entrance, entrance, like, like, right where it says scale on the drawing that what's up, and actually, if you go to another page, I think it's. So you see that that kind of bridge over the scale?
Yes.
So what we're proposing is like not to disturb the scale, leave it alone, let it be, let it, you know, be a a relic of the history of building and create an ADA entrance and a ramp, which we work out the details with the building department and connect that to the proposed parking area.
And what about the con- existing concrete? Whatever you wanna call it, uh like, it's not a sidewalk, really, there's a.
Yeah, what I mean, what exists along South Main Street is is gonna remain. There's, I mean, we're not proposing any work there, it there is.
That's existing sidewalk, it's not just talking to.
Sidewalk, there's an existing doorway, but.
And it's adequate?
It, I mean, it is adequate for, you know, for um to be used, but we're not proposing any improvements, I think that that, like, anything that would happen along the street front or would would be a greater consideration for the overall site. I mean, I understand there's no work proposed for the building.
Does any members have any further, any question?
Somewhere here, it says that the um pages of the project will be twenty twenty six for the dispensary, it's twenty twenty, twenty twenty seven for the ice cream shops and groceries, we said also a project development, or is that project of a different entity?
The owner of the property has engaged in order to complete seeker. We 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 are, we are proposing to to y'all our vision for how we how we see the site being built out. And and the best that we can strive as a hard look at this moment.
John, John, please. Please, we can hear you if you're trying to concentrate.
I wish you would.
Um, what, uh, so uh. I had a question. Oh, and and so you said there's no work on the, so the building as it's been restored now is not gonna be touched besides the ramp that'll go up to a doorway? And a sign hanging off the building?
Yes.
Interior will be worked on.
Really, no, the interior, I mean, the interior is is as it will be, um. There won't be any noticeable changes to the building.
Do the windows have to be like covered or something because of the marijuana?
I mean, there there there's minutia that will have to be worked out with um with O C M, Office of Cannabis Management, State Agency, so that, so they're like in in terms of the details of like um how that's managed, yes, but in in terms of intent, no, there's no changes to the building.
All right, any other question that open up to the public? Questions or if somebody has any? Uh, is there anyone that wishes to speak on this application? Now's your chance, John, if you want. No, okay, uh, anyone else, anyone wanna speak?
All right.
Uh, with that, since there is no one looking to speak from the public, uh, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Someone, second?
Dick and then Al? All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Our hearing is closed. Okay, Warren, do you wanna instruct us on how we go about working on this determination? And, you know, with in mind the possibly possible future projects?
With regard to the uh possible future development, I don't think those plans have reached a stage where they uh really have been even partially formalized. Um, so um I have no objection uh to um not engaging in any further environmental review of uh or review permitting review of what they might do in the future on that property, and I think the recommendation of George that he can, is contained in his letter to address that is fine, we would add that to the um resolution.
Uh, okay, so the recommendation is saying that you have to come back for two or?
Or it says any future construction related to the future plan will require planning board uh technical review based on a full engineering plan or reports for the same such as, but not limited to any lists and number application materials that we would require, so uh basically, we're reserving our right to review the uh any additional plans for the uh for the project such as the uh uh supermarket or small supermarket and ice cream shop at a later date. Uh, I think we're we're done with those issues for purposes of this application.
So is there definitely gonna be information when that phase of the project, traffic, sidewalks?
Yes.
So where?
We're just gonna use, we'll do this stuff in his letter today, cause here are some things that he's gonna ask.
Completely agree, and we understand that the gentility of the site does need a technical review apart from the work that we're currently proposing.
All right, so with that in mind, Warren, how how do we proceed or do we use, is this a? Oh, George has, is this the same one?
Yes.
All right.
Just just one other thing for the record, um, I did speak to uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear.
Oh, I did contact um Dutch County Planning and spoke to Clayton, who's our contact person there for buying planes, uh and asked whether um they felt and it, oh wait, I'm not, I'm on the wrong application.
That was the actual company, yes.
You know, let's, let let me just tell you that because we didn't address it for the prior applications, as we have it for the record. With regard to the uh to the prior application uh for the sawmill, uh we uh I there was a question that was raised about whether we needed another two thirty nine M referral because of the change from two buildings to one building, and I discussed this with Clayton at uh uh Dutch County Planning, and he said it was our decision to make, and I think we both reached the conclusion that the changes weren't significant enough to warrant another two thirty nine M referral. So if we could just make that part of the record for the prior case, uh, I should have brought that up before. So, now with regard to this application, the next step would be to uh uh review the part two of the E A F, did we declare this to be a type one action, did we use a full E A F or a short form?
Unlisted, but we used a full E A F.
We use, okay, so we have to use the full part two and go over the same thing we questions we did on on the last application.
Well, now that you brought up the two thirty nine M, what, they didn't have any comments about this stage of the plan, correct?
Are we talking about this plan or the prior?
About the the actual cannabis shop versus the future plans, et cetera, was there anything, so maybe we should just look at it real quick. Can we just refresh?
No, we didn't, we didn't discuss that, but I, I I I I feel based upon uh decisional law in this area and other guidance for D E S, seek a review, that the plans are just at this point uh at best speculative and uh haven't reached a level of detail uh to require the applicant to provide more detailed plans for what may happen in the future, that we can deal with that at a future date if and when they make application for additional development of the site.
Right, Warren, I just, I just wanted to check the two thirty nine M, is that they did give us to make sure that that's the only comments they had on there were about the future plans?
Are we talking about this, this application? No, Clayton and I did not discuss this application, the only thing I did was contacted him about the sawmill project.
Oh, I I under- yes.
Incomplete with comments municipality, there are two Dutch's county.
What? That's what he did?
That's what their determination was.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
His determination was incomplete with comments, buying planes has to resubmit this to the county. What are the comments? He's got a whole letter.
We're, we're. I haven't seen that letter. This is from the county?
Some of them were regarding possible segmentation, which we've already addressed. Parking design standard. Yada, yada, yada.
We reviewed this last time, actually, so we talked about, we talked about the the intent to review the street and the landscaping on the street as far as you the overall concept plan, we talked about the ADA access.
We also formally responded in our latest response.
Can you put the two thirty nine M response uh on the screen so we can look at?
Trish is doing that right now. Can you say it, Warren?
I can say it. So this is, gee, I haven't seen this.
Yeah, don't look at this last time.
Maybe I did, but I I missed it, um. This is back from October third, and it does say, department does not consider this application complete for review. You know, fully A F, then it comes in. Oh, he sees on the site there. Yeah. I I I didn't discuss that with Clayton, I can, but I'm not gonna be able to do it uh tonight.
Well, we talked gateway location, we talked about the comprehensive plan, we talked about how um the overall site needs to be considered as as one application, we talked about the reason why we're putting parking where we are on the corner is because it relates to the building and the ADA access, and um the discussion of the last meeting was that these comments are are really tied to the overall comprehensive plan of the site and not to the cannabis shop specifically.
Yeah, no, I I understand your point, what I'm concerned about is that uh some reason I was not aware of this, and uh I would have discussed it with uh with Clayton, but but didn't. I prefer to I prefer to discuss this with him um to see what county planning's position on that. Can you move it up, what's the um?
Page two?
Yeah, what's the, wait, wait, let me see.
Go right there, yeah, right there.
You know.
Yeah, so Warren, I mean, that's frustrating to me because this was, this was discussed at the last meeting, and we responded by the date for this meeting with comments to this letter that essentially, I mean, it's talking about design standards related to the town's comprehensive plan, which we fully intend to comply with in the overall development of the site. And then the part above what you're looking at is talking about segmentation and which was the initial issue. I think we've definitely moved beyond that at this point, that we've 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 acknowledged that um we've submitted the full E A F and our intentions for development of the overall parcel. Um, and not just the immediate project that we intend to move forward with in order to satisfy seekers um segmentation.
Let me see the first page of the county planning uh submission, the cover pa- there's a cover page. Maybe that's, okay, that's what I wanna see, give me a second. Can you raise that up a little bit? Keep that? No, they haven't. Yeah, I'm a little concerned about this. Doesn't say that their comment is that it should be denied. But it does indicate that it's incomplete. And the municipality must submit to the county. You know, I think I need to discuss this with county planning uh before we take action on this, my, my my opinion is that they're incorrect um in their analysis and concerns about future development, but I I would not want to um override the county on that until I've discussed it with Clayton.
Well, Warren, I I mean, I also spoke directly with Clayton when he issued this memo, and uh the issues are are, we're definitely tied to how to deal with seeker segmentation. Like, if we're gonna present a project that that comprehensively looks at the entirety of the site or just the building, and so this was issued in September, and now we're in November. And um we have submitted our due diligence by every single deadline that that is required of us. And the county has reviewed it, and so their advisory to y'all, and you have the authority as a super majority to override any comments that they provide you. And so I would say at this point, I mean, we've we've done everything that we need to do, we've gone above and beyond to show you what we're doing with the overall site, everything that we intend to do, and we will be back in front of you to review anything else that comes into that property.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I I'm still seeing this incomplete with comments municipality must resubmit to the county.
Advisory. Any comments?
It's it's not advisory, it actually says, it's it's in a category of there's a local concern with comments, which is advisory, there's a conditional section, there's an actual denial section. Um, and then incomplete with comments. And then informal comments only, I I I don't think it'll be a problem, but but I really can't sign off on it until I speak to the county about this.
Substantive substantively, it doesn't, unless he unless they, you know, cause a problem, you know, like they have a problem with the hour proceeding, it doesn't really change the timeframe, because like we could have, Warren, if you talk to him like tomorrow, and then send what, I guess we send whatever else he needs or wants to see the latest plan set, uh and then we could have uh a red, you know, I'll take like a, you know, is anyone of the board anticipate not doing it, and obviously we have to go through it, but it currently in your minds, are there issues that are gonna cause you to have a pause deck on this? No, so I I would anticipate more, you know, issuing a negative declaration, so you would be able to have those, both the resolution and the negative declaration ready for next month? If, once you talk to.
We weren't gonna issue a a negative a negative deck on this tonight, so. Yeah. Yeah, let me, let me suggest this, that we go through the part two of the E A F. And um, and then um, get a direction from the board as to whether they're gonna uh, vote for a negative or a positive uh, seeker declaration. Um, and I will pair the resolution for the next meeting, but first I want to run it past county planning. I think I could.
We haven't submitted any changes since September.
Well, what's this? Isn't this November?
It's comments, but there's no changes to plans. It's the same.
But it addresses their comments about the future plans and how it, how it interacts with this one. So I, I think it would go a long way to alleviate their concerns. And like I said, it's not gonna, it was like Warren said, we'll go through this now and it would not affect the timeframe. Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna approve it tonight. Anyway, we're not ready for that. So, so we could do, by going through it now, we could be ready for, for next month. It's your negative declaration and then vote on the resolution.
That's what I recommend.
Sounds good. So well, let's go through.
And Tricia, send, send me another copy of this, the, so I have it, just.
Two thirty nine M.
And make sure this submission goes.
Close up.
Email to play. Okay. Impact on the land. The proposed action, again, everyone speak up if you're disagreeing with what I'm saying. Impact on the land. The proposed action may involve construction on or physical alter, alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. No. Or yes, because we have to, we have to think about.
Basically gonna alter part of the site, right? Put in.
All right, boys.
In your driveway.
Okay.
Six part.
All right, 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 yeah.
So that's it.
Uh, proposed action may involve construction on land where the depth of water tap. No. Uh, the proposed action may involve construction on slopes. No. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed. No. The proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than a thousand tons. No. Prose action may involve construction that continues for more than one year. No. Rose action may result in increased erosion. No. Now, the prose action is or may be located within a coastal hazard. No. Um. Impacts of geological features. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique unusual landforms on the site. Minerals, cliffs, dunes, et cetera. No. Next section, impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands. No. Impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants into groundwater or aquifer. No. Impact on flooding. Uh, is it on development on land subject to flooding? No. Impacts on air. The proposed action may result, may include a state regulated air emission source. No. Impacts on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. No. Uh, impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. No. Impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource, resource. No. Uh, impact on historic or archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or ar- archaeological research, source. No. Can I move the page? No. Uh, impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreation opportunities. No. Impact on critical environmental area. No. Impact on transportation. Uh, no. Impact on energy. Uh. No.
No, that will cause an increase in the use of energy.
Not significant.
Right?
No, not significant. Okay, so yes.
Yes, and then.
All right.
It's gonna be no wonder.
All right, no, uh, upgrade existence substation. No. Uh, supply system to serve more than fifty homes. No. Prose action utilized twenty five hundred megawatts. No. Uh, the prose action may involve heating or cooling of more than a hundred thousand square feet. No. Impact on noise, odor and light. The proposed action may result in increase in no noise or noise, odors or outdoor lighting. I guess, yes. Rose action will may produce noise levels above local regulation. No, the rose action may blasting. No, the rose action may result in routine odors for more than one hour. No. Close action may result in shiny, light shining into adjoining properties. No, or small impact. Proposed action may result in light, lighting, creating sky glow. No, we're gonna make sure it's dark sky compliant, et cetera. Um. Uh, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health for from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. No. Consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with the adopted land use. No. So wait, yeah, so it's not consistent. Yes. Consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with existing community character. No. And then we'll wait on this last page. Right, right, Warren? Uh.
I mean, it's obviously gonna issue an egg deck on this. Um, if you, if you want to take a vote on that, uh.
Oh, do it now?
Yeah.
Okay. This project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment and therefore environmental impact statement need not be prepared. Uh, that is what I'm checking off. Um. So do I, do I have a motion to make this? So I'm making the determination now or not?
You're gonna, you're, you're making a determination of uh, non-significance and negative.
Okay. All right. Uh, without waiting to hear what the county has to say.
Uh, yeah, that, that's a different issue, really. It has nothing to do with seeker. Uh, why don't we say the vote is subject to confirmation from the county that this will not uh, affect your secret determination.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, if you think that's okay, or otherwise.
Yeah. That's okay.
Okay. Uh, actually, that's probably good, because in case we have a different board, that, that might cause a problem. Um. All right, so could I have a motion to make the secret determination uh, subject to review? Uh, what was it? What did you say? What language? Review of the county?
Subject to my uh, uh, consultation with county planning uh, with regard to the two thirty nine M um, recommendation. I, I'm pretty confident that after my discussion that they will not have a problem with us moving forward, but I don't want to do it unilaterally.
So can I uh, have someone make that motion?
Yes.
Scott?
Sir.
Dick, second? Uh, okay, uh, Al. Ari?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
Ethan?
Yes.
Uh.
Yes.
Uh, Dick? I also, and I on a negative declaration. Okay. Subject, subject to what Warren said.
Um, can I just get clarity on the understood with the technical comments received from George? That all seems like issues that can be conditioned of the approval. A lot of it is building department issues. So.
Are we, are we talking about the future plans?
Yeah, I don't feel like there's a, anything that we have to prepare for next month.
Well, just like the driveway, right? Thickness of the driveway, materials, just like, you know, standard sections, foundation for the light pole. There was on that first page, I would agree, those are technical, those are conditions to an approval. But since you have to come back next month, just have them ready, then there's no condition.
Okay. I'm just trying to.
I'd, I'd rather if you met those conditions rather than uh, putting those as conditions of the approval. So now that we have another month, you can do that. Okay, we all set?
We are, uh. All right, we're done, we're done, Warren. Thank you.
All right. I'll see you soon. Good night, everybody.
Clayton says that you had to call him tomorrow, right?
Pardon?
You'll be able to call Clayton tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll try to get in touch with Clayton tomorrow. Yeah, he's good about returning phone calls. So. Okay.
Great. Yeah, let me know what he says when he wants to talk to me.
Okay. I'll talk to you later. Bye bye.
Take care. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, too. Um. It's November. Education credits, make sure.
Oh shit.
Everyone gets.
I have that, so it's, you know.
Bring game demonstration. We have a box here, you can always just drop them off.
Okay.
Put it, you know, now up in, in the planning board box. Uh, obviously, time is getting short. Uh, also. Uh, like next month sometime. You know, if, uh, I don't know, I gotta, actually, I gotta look at who's, who's saying, obviously, any alternate, your term is up. And then we like, uh, just a note saying, you know, an email to direct it to the town board or a letter, whatever, saying I would like to be considered to re-up or not, or whatever. Hopefully you stay. Uh, and I have to check whoever else's uh, term is up. Uh, and uh, that's about it. Anyone have anything?
Is there any update on assistant farms? Cause they are, it says they're now being removed for another year.
It's a mess and, and they also owe us money. And they're fighting, they're not fighting, they're giving us a little bit of a runaround with like, oh, now we need like the, the, did, did Karina give it? Yeah, the W nine forum and all. We're working on it, but as far as the legal things, we'd have to ask Warren if it hasn't been any more, but as far as I know, no.
And did you get any update on the, the Hammer Town?
On the Hammer Town, Ed, the Hammer Town?
Eddie mentions that we don't have regulations for food trucks. So there's like, but this was something that was broached by the town board a few years ago and the conversation just kind of dropped. I don't remember why, though.
Uh, they talked about possibly regulating, it was, it was like last, you know, earlier this year or last year, the end of last year. And they talked about regulating it and uh, and what we said is as long as, what they said was as long as it's on private property, they're not looking to, you know, like, I guess one of the issues was Willworth was parking them on, on the street outside the Presbyterian church. People worried about someone getting hit and stuff, but on probably like when uh, backyard garden has like a lobster truck come in or, you know, it's off the street on private property. And now that situation definitely might have to be looked at as it seems to be somewhat of a uh, recurring.
It's not, it's not a food truck. They're operating a restaurant inside the building.
Uh, well, there's a, I, I'm sorry, we're not taking comments from the public right now.
Really? You, you, I think you need to understand.
I, I under, we're not taking comments from the public. This is not a public hearing. This is the board discussion or business. I'm sorry. We got, I'm willing to talk to you af- I'll willing to talk to you afterwards if you wish. Um. So Ed, you went and looked at it?
I went there, I went to Hammer Town Bar.
Hmm.
So the, the truck is a licensed truck. They don't prepare food in the kitchen of the house. They prepare food in the vehicle.
An airstream kind of trailer thing.
Yeah.
And then what do they do? Then the people?
They were having eating outside, but now they went inside.
Because of the weather.
Because of the weather.
So the people take their food from the truck and go sit.
I'm not sure how they, if they serve it to them or they take it, no one physically take it from the truck. I don't know that. So isn't that an occupancy issue?
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah.
They run, you know. It's a less of a food truck issue and more of a certificate of occupancy issue.
But I mean, it's already an operating business. It's not like the people aren't in there already buying stuff. It's in one of the auxiliary buildings or whatever. But they, I've been in there, like when they're selling stuff, they're selling things in there. People go in there and, and they serve you like a hot chocolate or whatever, and then you can have like, you buy stuff, right? This is the building in the back, right? The house, guest house or whatever they call it. It's, it's.
Not the guest house.
It's commercially zoned. Yes. No.
No, it's not.
Okay, all right. Enough, all right? We're discussing it.
I mean, you don't have the facts.
I don't.
I live there. I, I lived there also.
I told you I would talk to you, but.
I emailed you previously and no, and no one responded to it.
I'm sorry, I think I did respond to you and I said, I sent it to the building inspector because he, the code enforcement officer, officer who is the person responsible for it. You told me I didn't respond to you. That's not accurate. I responded to you, who I then talked to him for like a half hour today about the whole situation in preparation for the. Okay, so you're still talking? No.
Sorry.
Okay, this is not a hearing. This is not even in front of us. We're not even, the, the body that's responsible for this right now. Ed is the code enforcement officer. He listens to us when we have concerns and think that is what the situation is. There's no application before us. Technically, I could just be like, there's no application before us. Let's stop talking about this. Well, we're to, we, we work with the building inspector and the code enfor- slash code enforcement officer a- and try to make sure that people's concerns are being addressed in the town. And, and if there's any situations that we see that are, are out of bounds, we try to handle them. Okay? Again, it's not a public hearing. I'm not gonna get into discussions at, especially when there's not even an application in front of us. So I appreciate it. Again, I said I'd talk to you afterwards. That's it. End of story. Thank you. Okay, I said the guest house, the wrong house, whatever. They have it. It's thank, it's not important. It's not even on a record or anything like. All right, so Ed, sorry, so you were saying?
So I mean, we're on some gray area here. It's something that really needs to be addressed by the town board eventually. You know. So for the town board to bring back up the food truck issue potentially. But.
But, I mean, where's the line coming? Where it, restaurant operating versus you know, on, you know, on, uh, use.
Have to have a commercial kitchen. They don't have that.
And you even consulted with Drew.
Yeah, I, I consulted with Drew and so he felt the same way. It's, um, if, if we go after this one, we have to go after all of them. We can't just go after, we can't just segment and take one food truck and not go after everybody's. And I, what, how I left it, like I told it with them is finish your venue this year, but don't do anything next year until you come and talk to us. That's how I left it with them.
And they're gonna close it up for the winter?
Yes.
When?
I guess the end of November, from my understanding.
The end of November or the, or the end of December?
December. December, is it?
Yeah, yeah. Or that's what their advertisement says. And they're, and they're doing it on the weekends.
Yes.
I mean, it's your determination to make. It's like, you know, it's, if you, obviously, it's great, I think when, you're gonna have to talk to the town board about this, um.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, next week, next week, right? Yeah, next week.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's hard because you don't want to be like, oh, no one can do anything unless it's like specifically, but it's also like, can't be like this willy nilly like.
Yeah, you're opening up businesses, you know, or. One food truck.
Right.
Venue, and, and they're all done. If we say this can't operate, then none, none can operate.
I mean, the distillery, when it was operating, they had food trucks.
Like you said, T- Towers had them. Willaroots has had them, you know.
True.
But it's a little different. If you pull a food truck up to, my neighbor pulls a food truck up to their house and decides to have thirty people in the residence, the food truck is only one portion of the issue.
Right, I agree. Yeah, I mean, we're on a super.
And this is a commercial property with three buildings on it. So it's half commercial, half residential. That's another monkey wrench.
But there's residential properties on, on the Hammer Town property?
Well, the half, yeah, because you have the house, yeah. Right across from Kerry is the main house. In the back, the big house.
Okay.
And then when you first pull in and Hammer Town's on your right, they have the little guest house.
The gate.
With the gatehouse, yes.
And then when you first pull in and Hammer Town's on your right, they have the little guest house, the gatehouse, yes. Which is also residential.
But, so there's people living in those?
Residential zoning or usage?
Zoning.
Probably about the zone. What?
Have to look at, see, have a dead.
Do you have the zoning map up there, Ethan?
So having people going to the big house to eat. People going in as a big house to eat.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought.
That's different from just an understanding.
But I thought you meant that you had the, it's all the R zone, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Town board will have to tell you how to enforce that.
Yeah, and then, and then. I mean, there's like, there's farms, right, that have like.
Yeah.
Uh, weddings and stuff. But it is, you know, but then they're also doing it like every weekend until the end of the year, whatever. It's not.
Point, that's very different than somebody having a wedding. Do it next year without from.
Right, right, that's. Um. So it's gonna have to be according to like, I guess, you know, we'll have to talk to the town board. So I have to come and, uh, we'll talk about it and, uh. And figure out. Yeah. But I just don't regularly food trucks at all.
The town was talking about regulating and putting it into the zoning, but. That fizzle.
Well, what it was, I think Warren proposed like. Whatever Rhinebeck had, et cetera.
Say it doesn't have to be crazy.
And then it was, you know, it's, it was deemed a a bit, you know. Well, you know, more than the town board was looking for, is that, am I? Am I saying, am I being accurate, guys?
Yes.
Yeah.
And and it was just talked about that they would possibly get a permit from, um, Mather. But that, I don't think came to fruition either.
This would, would, um, county health department be involved?
The food trucks, they have to be, food trucks themselves with permits.
Certified for them to have.
No, because it's.
Using their bathrooms and stuff.
You know, if there's.
Not serving food.
You know, if it's like table service versus walking up to the food truck. Right, the food truck is licensed, in other words. To sell food, right?
Right.
What a lot of municipalities do is offer some sort of. Expedited review slash permit. Right, so they know where these trucks are and who's operating and under what circumstances, and then if. Like you say, if someone was gonna be doing a food truck and you're coming up. You know, you're on your app, you're like, I love this food truck, I'm going over there grabbing lunch today, you walk up, you know, you grab your lunch, you leave, right? If you're setting up. Place for people to sit down, to congregate, to eat. That's more of a site plan issue, that's not the food truck, or say you have a legal food truck, right? But now you're engaged in more of a sit down restaurant business, that's when most towns would say, well, I can't give this permit to you. You need to go see the planning board, and again, the planning board would review on a site by site basis like everything else, and some things are more important than others, you know. Or bigger deal, where. Depending on where you're trying to set up and what you're trying to do.
Are there servers there?
I know that one Westerly Canteen was at Ten Mile Distillery down on West Saic, they had servers.
Further blur in the line, you just bring a food truck up to. Any given facility, any. And just. I'm not a restaurant, because I don't have a kitchen. What the food truck sitting outside my building does, and people grab that food and come into my facility.
And they're not even grabbing.
That should not. Be something that's allowed. That's definitely running a restaurant use. Without having your approvals and permits, right? I mean, again, if you're already a restaurant, for instance, and you're just bringing in food trucks and some places do that, right? Just because it's different fare than what they typically serve, so I'm gonna, yeah, we're, this weekend, we're gonna bring in lobster for something or what have you, or pizza truck. Who knows what, right? You're already a restaurant, and this is a legal. Vendor for food, there there's no harm, no foul.
So that's kinda like.
That's your standard fifteen dollar permit fee, go ahead. Have fun, fellas, um, there's no site plan with something like that, but again, if. If you're doing something that's, as you say, gray area blurring the lines, that's when it should come in front of the board for an official site review. Yeah, that's where most municipalities.
As they're advertising themselves as a restaurant.
Yeah.
With table service, basically. They are doing it.
Yeah, that's.
And you said.
Where's that? On.
But like, what makes a commercial kitchen, can it be on wheels?
No, well, no, that's what I'm saying, in other words, you can't bring the truck to say, that's my kitchen. I'm not a restaurant, I don't have one. You're subbing your kitchen.
Exactly, exactly, it's just because it has wheels under it, doesn't make it.
That's what I'm saying, and that's the situation, that's not a gray area in my mind, that's.
Like a restaurant.
And that sounds like almost exactly what happened.
And like, farms and stuff, they're allowed to do certain events under Ag and Markets Law, and there's some pretty strict regulations that they're supposed to follow. Otherwise, they're running a business and they need to come in for site plan. It's like fifty one percent of everything has to be from the farm, or.
Right, yes.
Showcase, if it's a distillery or a winery, showcase your products, it's, otherwise, you're running a restaurant. And you gotta come back.
Rethink this.
Even like at Tower Pizza, like, they're already operating as a restaurant.
So again, if they brought in just something different than what they made. Most places would look at that and say, hey, okay, so they're gonna have a food truck, there's your fifteen dollar permit.
Right.
Everybody's happy, we're all, well, good, it it already has that, all the site length, the ones right through the grandfather, wherever the case may be.
Right.
I'll get back with you, we'll get a little.
You good? Second. Wait a minute. Okay, let's try. I heard the first. Uh, I didn't think I called. Uh, but what, uh. Alright, so was there anything else, there was something else, what am I forgetting? We have, what's going on? The dissing center, are they actively actually constructing anything, do they do the roof?
They started using the scaffold finally.
Okay. Um. And. And the slaughterhouse?
Yesterday, he hasn't got back to you. Yeah.
So what are they doing there, they're just building the driveway and like, I mean, the state must have seen that, right?
Yeah, they would, they must have that from that.
But supposedly, they're not really building, they're not, they're not building the slaughterhouse, they're just building a road, that's what they're getting this permission.
They shouldn't be doing any site work unless all the conditions.
All the conditions are met, that's why I called them.
Right, so they checked it out, their health department approved, will they should ever do it, you approve.
DOT, yeah.
I haven't seen it, I stopped calling, because.
I mean.
Alright, now. Can I motion adjourn?
Don't move.
I changed my mind.